We're in recording.
Yes, Keith's called in, audio only.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Do we need to take roll call?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and take roll call then.
Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Okay, we have five, um, meeting summaries, we have, uh, need a motion for minutes from January ninth? And public hearing from January ninth?
Make a motion to accept both?
I'll second.
Discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. Uh, no status sheet, no committee reports. I'll go to the first item, new business, PC O one dash twenty-three Wade Morris.
It is PC one dash twenty-three Wade Morris requested that his property to be released on from C two, C two to R six. The tract is point in X ten and located on east side of Gravey Road approximately ninety feet west of Willow Avenue. As you can see in the context map, it is located in South County and it is highlighted, uh, outlined in red in the area. This aerial map, uh, aerial image, you can see that site is located within the commercial strip. However, it is, uh, primarily surrounded by, uh, single family houses. Department recommends approval for this request as, uh, this structure was designed and built for residential use prior to conversion to commercial use. Therefore, department recognizes that this structure can be occupied as a residential uses without detriment to the existing structure and the surrounding residential uses as well as commercial users along the corridor.
Okay, um, we need a motion?
And I would just add that this is, uh, brought as a letter of recommendation today.
Okay.
Make a motion for approval?
I'll second.
Discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. Next item is, uh, old business, PC forty dash twenty-two St. Louis County Planning Commission.
So this is PC forty twenty-two St. Louis County Planning Commission, which is a text amendment relating to regulations for car wash facilities, or as we're referring to them in the recommendation, uh, vehicle wash facilities. So, uh, some of this, you know, most of this information we presented informationally on, uh, on February the sixth, but I'll go through it here again. Um, this was also reiterated in the memo I sent earlier, but as you may recall, this petition was initiated when the commission adopted a resolution to, to open the zoning ordinance up to, to look into this topic. The main purpose is to add definitions for the use. We don't have a definition of car wash, car wash facilities, even though the lit, uh, the use appears in, in several of the commercial, uh, the commercial and the industrial districts. So you can see here the, the sections of the zoning ordinance that are affected by this change. So there are, um, different types of car wash facilities the commission may be familiar with. There are the self-service, uh, bays where the individual washes the car. Um, there are automatic, uh, conveyor style, uh, tunnel car washes, and then automatic, uh, car washes where the car is stationary and the equipment sort of moves around the car. So all of these exist in St. Louis County. You can see the images of, um, actually this one on the left is the one up off of, uh, three sixty-seven by the QT that the commission may recall from, I think, twenty nineteen. It was, it went to C eight. Uh, so those are the different types of vehicle wash facilities that, that exist in St. Louis County. So the commission also discussed on the sixth, uh, and the, and then the report we mentioned that this also impacts car washes that are developed in conjunction with gas stations. So there are several of those, uh, that style of development in the county as well. Uh, the commission may, may see for themselves that the trend in the, in the, in the uses away from the self-service model towards the automated model, whether that's the conveyor belt or the, um, you know, where the equipment rolls over the car. So we've had six requests for changes in zonings to allow for car washes since twenty fifteen, uh, and four site development plans for the use where it's been permitted by right since twenty fifteen. So this, uh, map, the commission may recall, is, uh, showing the recently approved car washes in the area around South County Mall. And I attached it to the memo that we sent out earlier, um, the, the car washes that were developed with gas stations in that area. So there are a few more, I think, four more that, that appear on this map, uh, in the version that was sent in the memo. We were having some issues with, uh, our GIS tool to show the, uh, half mile buffer versus a one mile buffer. So if that's something that the commission, um, has concerns about or, or would propose a different, uh, buffer distance, we can prepare that document when we bring this as a letter of recommendation, but unfortunately we couldn't get that, uh, map produced for you today. Uh, go ahead, Gretchen, thank you. So why are we, why are we making recommendations for changes to car wash facilities? They are a very unique land use in terms of how they are developed on the site. Most car wash developments cannot be redeveloped for another use besides a car washed because of how they're developed. There is the tunnel, obviously, the vacuum bays, the stacking leading up to the tunnel, uh, which is also, uh, can be difficult to lay out because of the regulations that exist in our zoning ordinance. And additionally, there are a lot of impacts to the stormwater management, uh, facilities on the site because they have to be carefully designed so that the stormwater doesn't interfere with the, um, with the cleaning fluids and, and vice versa. So this slide is talking about, um, the trip generation for car washes. So you can see from the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Manual, the different trip generation rates hourly for each type of car wash facility or vehicle wash facility. So you can see the thirty-eight hourly trips for a self-service car wash, um, and eighty-five hourly trips for your traditional tunnel car wash. This is comparable to other sort of audio auto oriented uses. However, car washes don't have that vitality that, um, some of our other, um, more active commercial uses do. So here are the two definitions, uh, we've drafted for vehicle wash facility and vehicle detailing facility. So the vehicle wash facility is the car wash, vehicle detailing is, um, the interior and that sort of specialized cleaning of the car. And these are based on, um, definitions we saw in other jurisdictions as well as, um, tailoring them to the other recommendations that we have. So this table shows where the two uses, a car wash and a vehicle detailing facility are permitted right now. And one thing I do want to point out on this slide relating to vehicle detailing, the commission will recall that last night, um, the, there was a request for a conditional use permit in an industrial district for a vehicle detailing facility. Um, based on the recommendations that I'll, I'll go over again further in this presentation. Uh, if the zoning ordinance was amended per this recommendation, that individual would not have had to seek a CUP. The, the vehicle detailing would have been permitted by right in the industrial district. So this is the proposed, as I mentioned, we're recommending that vehicle wash facilities be permitted in the C three and the C four shopping, or excuse me, the C three shopping district and the C four highway service commercial district when they meet a half mile buffer. If they are located within that half mile of another car wash facility, the use becomes conditional. So this recommendation does not remove the use, um, from any district, but it does make it conditional, uh, when that buffer is not met. So it would still be conditional in the C two shopping district as it is right now and the C seven, uh, extensive commercial district. Uh, and you can see here, we've, we've delineated two types of vehicle wash facility, vehicle wash facility for automobiles and vehicle wash facility for commercial vehicles. And then, as I, as I indicated, the, the recommended, uh, permitted, where vehicle detailing is a permitted use. In the M one and the M two, we find it's appropriate where we've permitted vehicle service and vehicle repair in the industrial districts. And that it can be appropriately cited in some of our conditional, uh, excuse me, our commercial districts, but we're recommending that that only be through the issuance of a conditional use permit. So we are recommending the locational buffer to keep the use from crowding out, uh, our commercial arterials. We're recommending right now a one mile, uh, excuse me, a one half mile buffer between the facilities. This means that the first, you know, if there are no car washes, no vehicle wash facilities developed, that first individual just has to find a zoning district where it's permitted. But any of the subsequent developers of tunnel car washes, self-service car washes, or a gas station with a car wash, that use must meet the buffer. If it doesn't, then they have to seek a conditional use permit. We don't find that the buffer is necessary for automobile detailing or for vehicle wash facilities for commercial vehicles because the districts where we're recommending them, um, it's more appropriate for them to co-locate in industrial districts and in, um, those sort of quasi-industrial districts, higher intensity commercial districts. And then, uh, to, to account for the staff time and the resources involved in, uh, making sure that buffer is met, we're recommending a location verification fee of two hundred dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question, anyone?
Yeah, Mel, I, I, I do have a question. Um, by segregating these two, uh, car washing and detailing, okay? Uh, where, where does the, uh, type of, uh, uh, service where they provide both? For instance, many of the, uh, uh, automated car washes, do they provide detailing as well? So where would they fall out at?
So what we had found and currently, uh, as the zoning ordinance permits car washes currently, we have interpreted it to, uh, allow detailing when it is fully accessible to the vehicle wash facility. If it's accessory, it would be permitted if, if the vehicle wash facility is permitted. As a primary use, it has to slide in where it's permitted. But when it's fully accessory to, to vehicle wash facility, it's permitted where, uh, where we're recommending that would be permitted.
Okay, and just one more time, uh, why is it that we're, uh, sticking with a half mile buffer?
Sure. So, um, Gretchen, would you go back to the, the slide with the map of the area around the mall? Uh, I think this area really shows the, the impact that the buffer would have. Um, mostly because this isn't a use that, um, we think should cluster and one half mile is enough to separate the uses without making it overly burdensome. That, that's, uh, you know, I think for the commission to decide if you think a greater, uh, buffer is, is appropriate. But we found that the half mile is enough to keep the use from clustering without making it overly prohibitive.
Okay, if, if, um, if we could see theoretically, where these things could be shown even in a small scale map like this at a half mile versus a mile? Uh, would that be possible?
Yes, we could do that. Um, and, and as soon as the software will generate the document, we can send that. We won't wait until we're bringing you the letter of recommendation in March. I can send that to you as soon as it's ready. But we were just having some issues with the software itself to generate that buffer.
Okay, that, that I think would be helpful to me and maybe others, just to see how much clustering, uh, half mile would be. Uh, uh, I have sort of mixed feelings, uh, both ways, you know? I hate to restrict businesses, but on the other hand, we have done that in other cases. Uh, so.
And what I would say, uh, Mr. Sneed, is that even if they are within that buffer, they just have to seek the conditional use permit. So they could still be located within that half mile buffer, uh, but then it gives the commission that opportunity to, to apply extra conditions or to say, no, we do find this is too close.
Okay, so, so the conditional use thing is always there, they're out.
It's the conditional use permit is always the option if they don't meet the buffer.
Okay, so that would apply even if it's a mile, right? I mean, if it was to a mile.
If the commission thought that a one mile buffer was appropriate, uh, we would, the way it's drafted right now, if you were in that one mile buffer, then the developer would have to seek a CUP. So it wouldn't, you know, is it prohibitive? Uh, no, but there is that extra step. So it's not a guarantee if they're within that buffer, but they do have to go through that extra part of the process.
Okay, very good, appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we need a motion?
Make a motion for.
Wait, wait a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, if we're gonna get this information, uh, it's not much value if we vote to approve or deny it at this, at this, uh, juncture, would it not? Would that help? Look, let me ask this to the commissioners. Uh, would that, would that help you in any way to change what you would do tonight?
Seeing the half mile versus the one mile, would that change the commission's, uh, decision tonight?
Yeah, I think that's a possibility. Absolutely.
Okay.
So the commission can, um, you know, you can hold this until, until a subsequent meeting. Or if you did vote to approve it, um, what we could do is at the next meeting, we could bring it to you in letter recommendation form with both versions, both that has to, the buffers to differently show you, um, you know, show you that graphically and then the commission could determine, uh, which one it wanted to send if that, if that worked as well, um, whichever way you all want to go.
Let me, I, I'm gonna resend my motion.
Hey, what about the second?
I'll resend.
Okay, want to open it up for a new motion?
Uh, make a motion for a hold.
I'll second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a hold?
Aye.
Aye.
I've opposed, eyes have it five zero. And, um, we'll then go to letters for approval, old business. First is PC thirty-seven dash twenty-two.
So needy pause, PC thirty-seven twenty-two, um, is a letter of recommendation, excuse me, a letter of decision denying the conditional use permit consistent with the commission's decision, uh, in January.
We need a motion?
Motion for appro, uh, for denial.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. Um, PC O six dash twenty-two, we just, uh.
This is the text amendment relating to fees and site plan review in the zoning ordinance. So we had presented this to the commission in January and the commission recommended approval of, um, the text amendment as, as recommended. Subsequent to that executive meeting in January, uh, the department is currently engaging in a process improvement exercise with the Department of Transportation and Public Works that, uh, we expect to have impact on the site plan review procedure. Uh, we think that that would also impact the zoning ordinance section. So what staff has prepared is this letter of recommendation, but only pertaining to the fee portion of the recommendations. Then after the, uh, process improvement exercise is complete, we would come back to the commission with part B, if you will, of this letter of recommendation pertaining to site plan review with any of those modifications that are, um, you know, brainstormed as a result of this exercise. So what is before the commission right now would be to forward a letter of recommendation to the council pertaining to the fees on, on the chart before you. So the, this shows the current fees and then the proposed fees. So there's no changes to the recommendation. We've just sort of split it up so you can forward the fees part. Uh, and the reason that staff is recommending you do this is because we, we want to get those fees amended. Um, and we want to, um, take the opportunity to fully encompass any changes to the site plan review procedure without having these two, um, sort of tied to each other anymore. So there are no changes to the recommendation, but what you would be forwarding to the commission if you approve this letter is just recommendations for, for the fees.
Okay, um, we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the fees as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And then, uh, we already did PC O one twenty-three Wade Morris. We'll go to correspondence, PC forty-one dash eighty, St. Andrews Credit Union.
So this is an existing C eight planned commercial development at the corner of LeMay Ferry Road and Dumont Place. It is a, a credit union right now. The developer is proposing to completely redevelop the site, not to change the use. It would still be a bank, a financial institution, but they are proposing a new building and thus are requesting several amendments to the C eight ordinance to, to accomplish that request, including the size of the building, the height of the building, structure and parking setbacks, the lighting requirements and hours of operation. So here's the site, uh, you can see it on the corner there and you see how the structure is towards the northeastern portion of the site. And then this, uh, this is their proposed site plan. The building and the parking have sort of switched, uh, places. So the new building is proposed more towards the southern portion of the site. Um, they are maintaining, proposing to maintain the two curb cuts on LeMay Ferry Road and are proposing a new curb cut on Dumont Place. So you can see the, there is the, the bank and then you can see where the, uh, teller, the ATM lanes would be and then the, um, the accompanying parking. This is their lighting plan. Um, they are meeting the, the lighting requirements of the zoning ordinance at this time. And then here are the elevations. So you can see the, um, the portion that goes over the ATM lane and the teller lane. They're also proposing to be a sort of, um, balcony area, uh, uh, an elevated patio. I don't think I'm finding the right word, but that would be, um, usable space, like a rooftop area. So we are recommending approval of the modifications to the ordinance to facilitate this, uh, wholesale redevelopment of the site. So modifications to the building setbacks to locate it where they've proposed instead of the northern portion of the site. Uh, modifications to the parking setbacks, and these are all, uh, increased parking setbacks. This, the, the site plan they've, uh, submitted to us is, uh, more green space than was previously proposed. The parking setbacks are increased, um, and we're gaining some, some green space back. They are proposing, uh, requesting an enlarged, uh, size of the building because it is now a two-story structure. So the, the C eight ordinance right now limited, limits it to a one-story structure. Right now, the C eight ordinance limits the lighting standards to sixteen feet in height. The developer is requesting that that limitation be removed and they be allowed to utilize twenty-five foot lighting standards. The department is recommending approval of that change, but we are recommending also a increased, uh, lighting buffer from the residential parcel to the east. So instead of having to meet zero point one foot candles at the property line, which is what the zoning ordinance requires, we are proposing that they need to meet that foot candle level twenty feet to the west of the property line, which is basically to the edge of the, the pavement of their, of their parking lot to make sure that that light spill over, um, that the lights spill over doesn't occur on that residential lot. There were some really specific hours of operation in the C eight ordinance and we're proposing to remove those, recommending to remove those to permit regular business hours for the use. And then lastly, we are recommending that the ordinance, um, be amended to, to reflect the current zoning ordinance landscaping requirements. Because of the age of the ordinance prior to twenty fifteen, it doesn't have the current, uh, buffer yard and parking lot landscaping requirements. So we're recommending that landscaping for this development be as required by the zoning ordinance.
Okay, uh, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Wait a second, who was that?
I'll second.
Second.
Discussion?
I just have one question about, uh, the need for twenty-five foot lighting. That's taller than a, uh, two-story house.
So the, in their request, it, the, the main purpose is to have to develop fewer lighting standards. So the taller the lighting standards are, the fewer they would need. Um, you know, the staff finds that they can tune, you know, they can tune the lights so finely that this, we're hopeful that this foot candle requirement, uh, will mitigate the, the sort of difference by having that, those taller standards.
Okay.
But if it's the commission's will, um, you could recommend they stay at sixteen feet. Uh, another thing that the staff had discussed would be, um, you know, maybe they can only have sixteen foot standards east of the building and they can have twenty-five foot tall standards abutting LeMay Ferry Road. So if that is a concern to the commission, um, we could tweak that recommendation.
Well, it, you know, I, I'm always interested in how that's gonna affect. And the way you explain it, if it works, uh, and I'm sure it will, if they keep the lighting back at twenty feet, that should certainly, uh, that, I, I understand that that would be one way of doing it. Uh, it just seemed like that was very high standards and, uh, and many times they don't have shielded, uh, lights. And so, you know, you don't get it on your yard, but you get it as, uh, you can't see the sky no more, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I just bring it up, uh, because that sounds to be pretty high. I'm done.
What you wish then, what do you want to, you want to do?
Well, I'm, I'm not an expert in lighting, so, uh, I, I, I think the proportions of the lighting fixtures is even gonna look high. Uh, but I hate to make that kind of a, a judgment. That just, that's why I just asked is what was the purpose? And, uh, the purpose is, is they want to, uh, uh, get more, more distance out of fewer lights. And if they can achieve that, I guess that's fine. Some, some lighting engineer certainly need, you know, uh, will have to design it to do that.
And since this is a C eight and the, the change is so vast, it's basically a, a, a re, a redevelopment of the site, um, this site plan, after it goes through the formal process, be, you know, it would be this commission who would ultimately approve the site development plan. So the lighting plan would, would come before you as well. Um, so you would have the opportunity to see what it looks like on the plan. Um, and then the other thing I was going to mention is they, these lighting standards will have to have that, um, that cutoff angle, that shield around it.
Okay.
But you will be, be able to see the lighting plan if, if this modification goes through.
So.
Let me assess, but they're gonna know that before they start drawing any plans up, correct? So that they can go into this knowing that.
Right.
Knowing what we want.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I might add that this, uh, St. Andrews, um, has been in operations since I was really kind of a little kid. Uh, out of a house on Huffmeister Road.
Wow.
That they've certainly been a, a provider of services for that community. They really have.
Yeah, they've, they've had good growth.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah.
And staff finds that the structure that they're proposing is quite attractive.
Yes.
And we think that this is gonna be a much more attractive development just in terms of the amount of landscaping that we're going, because they're, they're putting, they're gonna be putting a lot more landscaping there in the front yard. So it's, um, I think it's gonna be a, a real improvement to that site.
And there will be a, in addition to the lighting buffer, um, there will also be that required landscape buffer that should also help mitigate some of that, that, you know, not the true spill, but obviously you can see when a light is shining. Um, and so the, the landscaping would also help screen that from the neighbor.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, um, we have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. Next item, PC one seven seven dash eighty-eight Burnham Companies.
So this is a request, um, to amend the permitted uses in the C eight district. Currently, uh, medical offices are not permitted and the, the property owner has a proposed tenant who does, um, like rapid drug testing, which we categorize as a medical office. So this site, um, there is an. So this site, um, there's an existing multi-tenant building and a, and a limited amount of parking onsite, which is one of the, the main considerations of this request. So there are office and personal service uses on the site which have, um, you know, uh, their own parking requirements. Medical office has a higher parking requirement. We do find that it is an appropriate use and this C eight development already has a parking reduction. The concern is that, you know, if they had all medical offices in this building, they would not have enough parking. So we are recommending approval of this change. And basically the available parking on the site will dictate how the property owner can lease it out. So right now they do have enough parking to accommodate this medical office, but they don't necessarily have enough parking for every, uh, office to convert to a medical office. That's not their intention. This is just to permit this, this one, um, this one tenant at the time. But in the future, the parking onsite would be what sort of limitates the, the options for use on the site.
Okay, uh, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a second?
Second motion.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I have it five zero. Then we've got P C sixteen and seventeen dash twenty-one McBride Bearland Company.
P C sixteen and seven dash twenty-one McBride Bearland.
Ashra, could you pull your microphone up, uh, a little bit?
Can you hear? This is good?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
This is P C sixteen and seventeen dash twenty-one McBride Bearland Company, L S C. This is a subdivision and, uh, the tract is six point five eight acres in extent, located on north side of Lucy Avenue, West of State Highway one forty-one. Okay, site is located in the South County and it is outlined in red on the aerial. So this is the site development plan. There are nineteen detached single-family houses. This subdivision, uh, can be accessible via Lucy Avenue and Magistrick Drive. Uh, and there is a significant common ground buffers, uh, broadly like total two point four five acres of common ground and there are some measures for tree preservation. This is the landscape plan, uh, and they, uh, there are two trees for a lot and also, uh, some, uh, tree preservation measures as well.
And then what I would just note for the commission that you, you can see on the plans, Ashra's outlined the unincorporated portion of the development. But you may recall from public hearing and you can see on the plan that the northern half of this development is located in the city of Valley Park. So the commission can only approve the unincorporated portion.
Okay, um, we need a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second motion.
Have a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, I have it five zero. And last is, uh, P C O five dash ninety-six Taste Properties.
So this is an existing C eight development at one forty-one and New Smizer Mill Road. These are architectural elevations. The, uh, property owner is proposing, um, just sort of regular facade changes, new colors for the building. So you can see it's here located by, uh, close to, oh my gosh. See, is that St. Clair? I got my appendix out there and now I'm forgetting what the hospital is.
We zone St. Clair.
Yeah, St. Clair. Um, so they are proposing, uh, you know, uh, a limestone facade and, and two shades of gray. We're recommending approval of these elevations.
Okay, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Any discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, I have it five zero. Anything for the good or the order?
I know I mentioned this, uh, to several of you last night, but, uh, the commission officially has two new, has officially two new members, Paula Hart and Christopher Bedell, and they will begin, uh, with the commission starting in March. So be on the lookout before the first meeting. Uh, we will be planning a social opportunity for them to meet staff as well as, uh, to meet, uh, to meet all of you all. And, um, yeah, so we'll get that out on the calendar and we're looking forward, we're looking forward to onboarding two new members.
And they were both able to watch last night's meeting since they will be here for the March executive meeting when we present those staff reports. So they have viewed the, the public hearing.
Okay. Anybody have anything? Seeing none, thank you everyone.
Thank you everyone for, for finding the time for this meeting. I really appreciate it.
Happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Don't move.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a five zero and we're back when?
On the sixth for an executive meeting.
March sixth, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Everyone.